Stack the deck for a full meeting. It's normally stacked, but it's normally early in the year. January, February, January mostly.
Should be a lot bigger stack. Six o'clock somewhere.
No, not here yet.
Official. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We would ask that Reverend Dan Phillips from Grace Fellowship come forward. And Reverend Phillips, could you lead us in invocation and also in the pledge afterwards? We'd ask everyone to stand at this time.
Let's pray. Our Father, we are assembled together in this building because you have ordained orderly government. And these people on this dais have been elected by this city, and they have accepted the commission and the charge to be the stewards to you of that which you have entrusted to them, the well-being and the prosperity of this city. So Father, I ask that you grant to each and every one a clear mind, a renewed commitment to serve this city and to serve you, a desire, Father, to see the very best that can be produced, that can be brought forward, and that can be given to each and every citizen of this city. Father, may it also be known that it is good for brethren to dwell together in peace and in unity. So may each and every one speak from their heart, but may they speak with respect, and may they speak with concern. And Father, we ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Norwood.
Present.
All members are present and accountable.
Thank you. We now have approval of the minutes from the February 26, 2015 meeting.
We approve.
There's a motion and a second by Commissioner Brown. We'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose motion carries. We're now moving to our public recognition and presentations. Our first proclamation is for Women's History Month, the month of March of 2015. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, they have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of labor, of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home. And whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation, and were particularly important in the establishment of every charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institution in our nation. And whereas the American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as elderly leaders in the forefront, early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, not only securing their own rights, suffrage, and equal opportunities, but also abolitionist movements, emancipation movements, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all. I, now therefore, Tarrell Hill Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, hereby endorse and declare March of 2015 as Women's History Month in the City of Palaca. And we call upon its citizens to observe this month with the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities that honor the history, accomplishments, and contributions of American women. As we headway on crucial issues of our time, let the courageous vision championed by women of the past generations inspire us to defend the dreams and opportunities for those to come by positively impacting the lives of our mothers, sisters, wives, and daughters. We will enrich the lives and prospects of our fathers, brothers, husbands, and sons. And witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause to be affixed to seal of the City of Palaca on this 12th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2015. Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, James Norwood Jr., Tarrell Hill Mayor. We would ask that all commissioners that have come forward and accept this proclamation for Women's History Month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. This is Mr. Jessica Peterson. Here tonight. Can you come forward for me? This proclamation reads, whereas the National Colorectal Cancer Roundtable, the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, the Cancer Research Foundation of America, and the American Digestive Health Foundation, and White House have joined together to encourage Americans to observe March 2015 as the National Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas colorectal cancer is the second most common cancer diagnosed in men and women in the United States, one in 20 people will develop colon cancer, and every 10 minutes a life is lost to this disease. While anyone can be colorectal cancer, the risk increases with age. Nine out of 10 cases occur in people over 50 years old. And the likelihood is also greater for people of African-American or Eastern European descent, and those with inflammatory bowel disease or family history of colorectal cancer. And whereas less than 65% of Floridians above the age of 50 receive annual screenings for colorectal cancer, symptoms can include stomach pain, aches, or cramps that do not go away, and weight loss without a known cause. Yet many cases have those symptoms, especially early on, when they can't be prevented or more effectively treated. So it's crucial for people of all ages to discuss colorectal cancer with their doctors and those at risk to get regular screenings, which are now covered by most health insurance plans for adults ages 50 to 75 at no out-of-pocket cost to the patient. And whereas the Florida Department of Health and Senior Services Bureau of Cancer Control, in partnership with the Florida Cancer Consortium, the American Cancer Society, the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, remain committed and dedicated to inform the public about colorectal cancer, prevention, and screening. Now therefore, I Tarrell Hill Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, hereby endorse, declare, and designate the month of March 2015 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Palaca, and hereby encourage the citizens of Palaca to observe the month by contacting the Putnam County Health Department to inquire about colon cancer screening programs available locally, as well as other information regarding the prevention and control of colorectal cancer. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed to seal of the City of Palaca on this 12th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2015. Palaca City Commission, Tarrell Hill Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and James Norwood Jr.
The mayor kind of said everything, but I just want to encourage everybody, March is colorectal cancer month for the whole state of Florida. I work for the Florida Department of Health. I'm actually out of Olatchua County, but I do cover Putnam County. If anybody needs assistance finding somewhere to get a colonoscopy, whether you have insurance or not, please contact the Putnam County Health Department. They can get you right to me. If anybody knows someone who's 50 to 64 who doesn't have insurance and needs help getting a colonoscopy, I can assist with that. The Florida Department of Health pays for those colonoscopies for someone to have one at chance. They will have to travel to Gainesville, but we can also help with transportation if that's something. So please, I encourage everyone to get screened. It's a very devastating disease, and it happens to one in 20 people.
Representative from Pilot Club. We have a proclamation that reads, whereas the Pilot Club of Palaca is one of more than 530 clubs chartered through Pilot International, a global organization of executive, business, and professional leaders working together to improve the quality of life in local communities throughout the world. And whereas the Pilot International provides guidance and encouragement to our communities through sponsorship of safety and awareness programs, especially as they relate to brain-related disorders. And whereas each year thousands of Floridians are diagnosed with devastating disorders of brain and nervous system, including Alzheimer's disease, aging, stroke, alcohol, and drug addiction, spinal cord injury, autism, schizophrenia, and mood disorders, all of which cause considerable pain and suffering for these victims and their families. And whereas in this century, we are embarking on a new era of discovery based on the rapid progress being made in the studies of brain and powerful new tools available to neuroscientists, greatly benefiting people who are incapacitated by spinal cord injuries, depressive disorders, epileptic seizures, Parkinson's disease, Huntington's disease, muscular dysphagia, cystic fibrosis, and other life-threatening disorders. And whereas new insights from neuroscience research will give us more concise understanding of how people become addicted to drugs and thereby provide more effective treatments for those with chemical dependence. And whereas hundreds of scientists at Florida's premier universities, private colleges, and research institutes are at the forefront of many promising efforts being made to better understand the complexities of the brain, find better treatment for brain disease, reduce the cost of diagnosis and treatment of neurological conditions and implement cures. Now therefore, I Tarrell Hill Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of March 16 through 22, 2015, as Brain Awareness Week in the City of Palaca, calling this observance to the attention of all our citizens, committing the Pilot Club of Palaca for the dedication to raising the community's awareness of brain-related disorders and their efforts to help relieve the suffering of victims' brain-related illnesses and disease. And witness there, whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed to seal of the City of Palaca on this 12th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2015. Tarrell Hill Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and James Norwood Jr. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Oh, my, thank you. And Pilot Club is also associated with the Anchor Club at the high school, and we have a lot of future pilots from the Anchor Club. And we do scholarship houses in Gainesville and Tallahassee. We also have started a new care, We Care, to help the older people with caregiving. And so Pilot Club has really done a lot for the awareness of brain injury and caregiving. And we appreciate the city.
Thank you. Would you like to thank the Pilot Club for their continued service to this community as well?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Massey from the Department of Juvenile Justice. I have a proclamation that reads, whereas Florida's juvenile crime problem has ramifications far beyond the juvenile justice system and affects the health and integrity of state businesses, community, education, and family institutions. And whereas the mission statement of the Department of Juvenile Justice is to increase public safety by reducing juvenile delinquency through effective prevention, intervention, and treatment services that strengthen families and turn around the lives of troubled youth. And whereas the City of Palaca will work with the Department of Juvenile Justice, local businesses, law enforcement, schools, and judiciary system, the faith community, and other concerned citizens on programs to prevent juvenile crime and improve youth prevention and intervention services. And whereas the citizens of our community need to have a heightened awareness of juvenile justice issues. Now therefore, I Tarrell Hill Mayor of the City of Palaca, do hereby proclaim March 27, 2015, as Youth Success Day in the City of Palaca. And we urge all citizens of the community to take a part in stopping or preventing juvenile delinquency and to make a conscious effort to learn about programs for prevention and intervention. And further call upon all citizens to join together in the fight against crime in our community. And witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Palaca on this 12th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2015. Tarrell Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and James Norwood Jr.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Chris Massey. I work with the Department of Juvenile Justice here in Putnam County. And like Mayor Hill said, on March 27, we're hosting an event. It's gonna be at the E.H. Miller School here. Called Youth Success Day, where my agency, along with several other agencies throughout the county, are recognizing as many youths as we can for doing positive things in the community. We all hear about the negative stuff. It's everywhere. But there are kids here, and there are families here that are trying to do the right thing. What we're attempting to do on this day is provide them a forum to come and hang out. We're gonna have a lot of games. We're gonna have a lot of food, some music. I've gone to a lot of businesses and gotten lots and lots of support from so many people. And I just wanted to appreciate, thank you again for giving me the forum to come here and talk. Appreciate it. Go have a good afternoon.
We will now move into our public comment section. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment? You have three minutes to speak. We have one card from Roxanne Weeks. Would you like to come forward at this time?
I'd like to address, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Roxanna Reagan-Wings. I'm a 16-year city resident of Palaca. I'd like to address the Police Department's accreditation. This is a copy of the newspaper article that I'll read with you. It was published in the Palaca Daily News. And based on quotes by interim Chief Griffith and also the reporter Pete Skeba of the emailed assessment report. Basically, well, this is an actual quote. Griffith said, "The wrong way went on farms shot the application down, not a lack of training and inspection." Unquote. This is the actual assessment team's report for the accreditation. They were here for three days, December 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. It's a three-member team. On day one, they weren't able to do any ride-alongs on patrol because, quote, "Many of the files were found to be void of accurate proofs or deficient in other aspects." Unquote. And the team was committed to that. The same occurred on day two. Although the team was able to assess the agency's vehicles that day, which were in compliance. On December 4th, the third day, the final day, a team member visited the All-Side Detectives Building, and the other members completed file and agency reviews. They then conducted an exit interview with the agency members in which then-Chief Getchell and then-Assistant Chief Griffith were present. They were told the team would not be making a recommendation to the Accreditation Commission because of the numerous issues discovered. And it states in the report, quote, "Unfortunately, Chief Getchell became upset, disagreed with the team's findings, and the exit interview ended." Now, I'm gonna leave this with you. The standards require 160 mandatory compliance issues and 100 non-compliance. Everything they failed was mandatory. The things that are of great concern to me and should be to other citizens. There were issues of the firearms inspections that were mentioned in the article and that an armorer had not inspected. But they also, the auxiliary members did not receive firearms training, use-of-force training, less lethal weapons training. And they did not carry pepper spray, a baton, or a taser. I guess basically, they're just given a gun and sent out there. That's what it sounds like, and I hope not. All members are required to participate in an infectious disease training prior to assignment. And they said, well, the city's exposure control plan was what they had used. But that is void of basic epidemiology, symptoms, and methods of transmission. The, there's also a, oh, I'm, time?
You got, you can wrap up.
Okay. There's also a hepatitis B vaccination program that's mandatory. They can either get the shot, or they can decline it. They weren't even offered that. And it was, one was 13.